We suspended the rules. I'd like to jump down to item nine, Communication from Committees and Special Reports. A Community and Economic Development Annual Report given by Gary Kaye. And then the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation Report given by President Ron Cox. And then we'll go back to the regular agenda.
My name is Gary Kaye. I'm the new head of the, or the new chairman of the Economic, Community and Economic Development Committee. I was selected about a month ago, so I've been asked to give this report, which is kind of interesting. I was involved and have been involved in the committee for about two years now. And I can read the report to you, but that's usually kind of dull, and I think all of you can read. And it's been made available to the general public, I believe. So I'd like to go over just some of the highlights of it and introduce some of our new members. Meg Crowley is a brand-new member that is, has just started. Beg, back in the room there. And we have a new liaison, Councilman Scott. And he attended our meeting this last week. Thank you very much for coming. We look forward to working with you. During the past year, we've had a couple of new developments in the city. One of them is at the intersection of Friendswood Drive and Echo Lane. That's a townhouse construction development. They did get an economic incentive grant to begin that. Got a couple of other grants that have been given out during the past year. One of the things I wanted to talk about, or the main thing I wanted to talk about this evening, as I said, most of it is, you can read in the report what we've been doing the past year. But what we would like to do as we move forward, we have a couple of new committees in the city, and one of them is the Downtown Economic, Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation. Like to work more closely with them, so we don't work at cross purposes, so we have some synergy going, so we can join forces, so to speak, to move the city forward, both in the economic planning, but also in the city development, improve the city as much as we possibly can. We'd like to also work, in addition to these committees and other organizations in the city, like to work with City Council through our liaison, Councilman Scott, and also like to work with anybody else in the city who has some ideas. I'm open to them. I'm new to the city, new in the sense I've only been here for about three years. So, standpoint of Friendswood, that makes me a brand-new person. I come from Southern California, but I do have Texas roots. My parents and all my relatives do come from Texas, just not this particular part of it. So again, I'm looking forward, as the year moves forward, to working with the city, working with different parts of the city, so that we can improve, I don't mean improve in just an economic sense, but the quality of life of the city. Because economic development is also part of the city's quality of life. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ron, you have the floor.
It's about as dangerous as giving it to Mayor Smith, I think, so. Thank you so much. I'm Ron Cox, and I was elected president of the FDEDC Board about a year ago. Most of the committees have chairs, but by state law, they, I've been declared president, so I'll be glad to do whatever's appropriate in that regard.
Make Friendswood greater again?
Make, yeah, well, sure. I do want to introduce our Board. We've been in, working together now for a year. And Alton Todd is our vice president. Pat McGinnis is our secretary. Pat's here. Bubba Johnson's on the board. Rebecca Hellenberg in the back. And Paul Marks, who's here, is also on the board. Trey Hill is on the board. Alton and Trey are not here tonight. Although, I will say that all of the committee members are very active and very dedicated to the job that you've given all of us to do this work. And I do want to review some of the activities, because this has been a formational year. We did not feel obligated to begin to spend money and then worry later about spending it inappropriately. And so we wanted to do everything from a formational perspective that we thought was appropriate. So from, we've approved bylaws. The Friendswood Economic Development Corporation is, in fact, a nonprofit corporation. And so it has IRS tax-free status. All of those papers have been filed, and it has bylaws. And the bylaws call for the election of officers and an annual meeting. We meet tomorrow afternoon at the library for our first annual meeting, at which time that the Board will elect officers again. We also have, and I think this is important overall, a staff services agreement with the city of Friendswood. I've personally known of economic development corporations that are very independent and have their own staff, and economic development corporations that work within and under the purview of the city manager and the city staff and, of course, the city council. And my personal preference is to do it the way you all have done it. Quite frankly, I think it's a much more efficient way to do things. So, the staff agreement that was approved by the city council and approved by the Board calls for the staff to serve, the city staff to serve as the staff of the development corporation, and for the development corporation to pay the costs associated with that. And so we have a contract of some nineteen, almost twenty thousand dollars to do that. And it becomes especially important when projects start, I think, because the city staff will manage whatever projects go, come through, both the Board and the city council. And so I think that that is a good formational process. We also are in the information gathering mode. What we've learned is that we are not unique to the state of Texas. There are 586 corporations, just like ours, that collect sales tax throughout the state of Texas and apply that sales tax for economic development purposes. You all will recall, there are two types of sales tax, or two authorities, four A and four B. There are some three hundred, over three hundred and fifty cities that are four B like we are. So, the, so that, since we are not unique, it's best to gather information and find out what other cities are doing, so that we don't find ourselves trying to reinvent the wheel or making mistakes along the way. And so we've gone through that effort by first to talk with, to ask HGAC, the Regional Planning Council of Governments, to come in and provide some information to us on what grants, what programs, what other planning activities they have that might be relative to downtown. We also invited the city of Nassau Bay to come over. You've probably seen Nassau Bay's redevelopment, and it's very, very different from what we probably would end up doing, where they essentially tore down downtown and are rebuilding it. But it provided a lot of good information in terms of what the expectations were, how they were going about doing that, and what they would do. Tomorrow, we'll hear from the city of Pearland. We have some guy named John Branson coming over. And as, and you all know that John is the deputy city manager of Pearland. And he's going to talk about gateway and other kinds of information and guidelines to identify Pearland for what it is and how we might learn from that. What can we do to create the gateway that we need in Friendswood? Probably next month, we're gonna, we're gonna do something very unique. We're gonna actually talk to the staff of the city of Friendswood. We're gonna ask them, where are those synergies? Where are things that you think are needed that we can be taking a look at from a budgetary and financial perspective? And so, we've been fairly deliberate. It's formational, it's information gathering, and I think, I think in this coming year, we're going to settle in on a plan. The other thing that we did this year, in terms of that formation, was have a planning retreat for ourselves, facilitated planning retreat. Joe Gonzalez came in, spent the afternoon with us, just like he does with the city council and the staff. And out of that came a vision and a mission statement for the FDEDC. The vision statement is that downtown Friendswood is, is as follows. Downtown Friendswood, a family-friendly destination with beautiful streetscapes and unique businesses. So that's, that's what we want Friendswood Downtown to look like when it grows up, a vibrant place to be, and, and a place that adds to the economic base of our community. We established a mission statement that is threefold. One, to be able to communicate with and engage our citizens in projects and plans that we might have. To make well-planned and strategic recommendations to the city council. And that probably is our key mission, is to make sure that what we do is done well. And then thirdly, to exercise our fiduciary responsibilities. We are, after all, challenged or charged with spending the taxpayers' dollars. And so we may be the only committee in town that has, that actually was put together to spend money, but it is the taxpayers' money, and we want to do that well, and we wanna, we want to be strategic about it. That's why we're taking our time, the way we have been doing. One of the things we will do tomorrow is adopt a budget. And the budget estimate for fiscal year eighteen, seventeen, eighteen is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred. We, we have the contract, we have economic, I mean, we have insurance costs, which leaves us just under four hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for expendable funds for the coming fiscal year. I would, I would point out that, that we understand and we know that whatever we budget in terms of the use of those funds has to be approved by you, and it has to go through a public hearing as well. So that's why we want to be careful. We want to make sure that whatever comes to you is done well and appropriately. So with that, we, I think I can speak for the Board to say that we all appreciate the opportunity, the appointments that you made, and the opportunity to be a part of a process that's much bigger than us, quite frankly, just like you are. And we hope to continue to do a good job for you and one that you'll be proud of.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Yep. And then we'll go on down. Joint public hearing to receive comments from the public, both oral or written, oral and written, regarding zone classification change request for 4.372 acres. Being part of Lot 26 of Voss subdivision, Howard subdivision Reserve E pending recordation, located at 1757 South Friendswood Drive, FM 518 in Leisure Lane, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from Office Park District to Community Shopping Center. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. The Commission called their joint public hearing to order.
Yeah, that was a scheduled regular meeting of the city of Friendswood. And zoning commission to be held Monday, August 7th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, and immediately following, in the second-floor conference room at City Hall, located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. And I will call us to order.
All right. So this is a zone change request for 4.372 acres, located at FM 518 in Leisure Lane. Currently, the property is undeveloped. When it is developed, it will be subject to the Community Overlay District Regulate, Development Regulations, which we know is the COD. The uses that would be allowed on the property if it were zoned CSC are outlined in the permitted use table. That was all provided in the back-up material before. Water and sewer services have been made available to the tract, as well as the detention pond. The pond will serve this tract, as well as the, you see the fences up now, that is for the Care Now site that's being developed. And then Lidl Grocery Store also has a site plan approval for the remaining. It's a little over five acres. So that detention pond actually serves all of the tracks. A traffic impact analysis has been submitted by the applicant. It was late last week. It's being reviewed by staff. We will forward it to the Commission and City Council for their review as well. Just a little bit of history on this. Zone change request was processed on this property, property earlier this year. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation. The applicant withdrew the application prior to council consideration. A formal protest was filed on the property, so, and that would have required a supermajority vote by council. The same request was also made in 2010. Planning and zoning forwarded a recommendation, and City Council took no action, because the applicant withdrew their application at that time. And I just want to remind everybody now that this is not going to be on P&amp;Z's agenda upstairs tonight. Instead, on August 17th, at our regular meeting, the P&amp;Z is going to consider that item that night, trying to accommodate the space for everybody.
Before we take public comment, is the applicant here? Would they like care to comment? Would you?
I'm a partner at Vergata Property Company. We're the applicant for the zone change. We're also the property owner. We appeared here in April, at which time we weren't the owner of that property. Since then, we have purchased the property. So it's the 4.37 acres that was mentioned, and that is the property that's in front of the detention pond. It does not include the detention pond. That pond is still owned by Mr. Jack Howard, from whom we bought the property. I think Mr. Howard's owned that probably since the late 90s. The reason we withdrew last time was the, the initial request was for the pond and the property we were buying. Since we were not buying the pond, we couldn't rezone it. We can't, I can't rezone something I don't own. So that was, that was the initiative behind, behind that, the change in application. What we're bringing today is just the piece in front. On the pond issue, the pond serves as a utility for all three of those tracks, as Aubrey mentioned. Storm sewer these days is every bit as critical as a sanitary sewer and a water line, to operate a building and to have it function. We are, Audrey, Aubrey mentioned, we're one of three parties that's a beneficial user of that, of that pond. Currently, Mr. Howard owns it. Our intent, the three parties, the three landowners, our intent is to form a property owners association, which will take ownership of the pond from Mr. Howard, with those three beneficial parties being levied for the perpetual maintenance of that pond. That hadn't, hasn't been completed yet. It certainly will be. All three of those owners, as I mentioned, it's a critical utility. We have a strong self-interest in the functioning and the maintenance of that, of that going forward. Also want to add to that, we are open to utilizing that, that pond area in a way that's an amenity that would benefit the community. You know, as one party to that, we can't dictate it, we can't drive it, but certainly we intend to advocate, with that group, as it gets formed, some type of amenity-type use. I don't know exactly what form that will take. I think it's a very prominent piece of property. Even with buildings developed around it, it's going to be visible. Everybody driving by there is going to see it. The community's going to see it. And I think that's critical, that it is maintained and used wisely. To that end, we, we're making a presentation to the Parks Board on the 22nd, to get their input on that, how that may fit into some of the other park initiatives that are going on. I'm not that familiar with that commission or what they do, but we felt that would be a productive meeting, to see if there may be some synergy in that. With respect to the use, the current OPD zoning, it's Office Business, Office Business Park zoning, is a commercial use. The buildings on that, the buildings I can construct in an OPD zone are the same buildings I can build in a CSC zone. They can be as much as forty feet tall. We're going to have concrete parking lots, dumpsters, lot lighting, all those things, mobility challenges that go along with commercial development. They're going to, those things are going to be the same either way. It comes down to, in that case, a matter of use. So that's what we're, what we're discussing here is, you know, what uses are we going to put into these, to these buildings? So in the, in this, in the OPD, uses that are available to us, that I consider quasi-retail, and I think a lot of us would, would see them in retail-type developments, dry cleaners, banking, financial services, urgent care clinics, and other ambulatory healthcare facilities, personal care uses, nail, hair salons, massage studios, pet clinics, insurance and real estate storefronts, and bakeries. Examples of things that would be available to us in the OPD. What's not there, and what we want to pursue, is restaurants. We think that there is, there is good demand for that, in that location, and, and we want to be able to pursue that. So, in addition to the occupancy difference, there's also a density difference. So in, in OPD, there's a much greater likelihood that the building density will be greater. There'll be more square feet on the ground. The odds of multi-story buildings are greater. In an OPD development, there's less parking demand on those uses, and there's less mobility, onsite mobility flow demanded on that. CSC is the opposite. It requires convenience, and it requires more parking. So you're going to see a smaller density of square footage on the ground under a CSC. So generally, that's what I have to say, without being too redundant. I know we've all talked about this quite a bit, but I appreciate y'all's time and consideration. If y'all have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you.
That's my partner, David Boons, has a few comments as well.
Yep. Good evening, council. My name's David Boon. I wasn't here for the April JPH. I was out of town, so. I wanted to share a little bit, one of the three owners in the property that's being discussed tonight. Get a little family background. My grandparents came here in the 1950s, so we've been here a long time. I grew up here shortly, I went to college shortly after, like a lot of Friendswood people find their way back into Friendswood and raising my own family. Got a wife and three kids, with the oldest one starting kindergarten next week, so jumping So we have, we haven't had the zoning change that we requested in April, but we've been busy the last three months, like Jim discussed, figuring out easements with all the adjoining owners, utility easements, access easements, getting our TIA done that you guys will have shortly. Other thing, we've been working closely with Jack Howard and Nolan Allen, and I know some, you guys have discussed, they've had some drainage issues, but trying to get that solved, and hopefully, we anticipate the Drainage District signing off on the 22nd to get the plat finalized, starting to grow some grass out there. Two kind of specific things I'd like to speak to is the pond, a little bit more. Jim hit most of it, but, and then also Chick-fil-A and their interest in the site. So just reiterating, we definitely want that pond to be an amenity. We think it's a good piece of land, and it's a four-acre lake that will, it'll, it'll hold water. It's not just a flat pond for those who don't know. It's starting to fill with water and grass, and there'll be fish in there, and there'll be kids riding their bikes over there to catch fish. I mean, that's what we did, so I'm sure other kids will do it, too. Chick-fil-A, so last week, a, the corporate representative for Chick-fil-A flew in, and we had breakfast with them last week, and he confirmed that they have a very high interest in the site, and they are anxious to move forward. They, they want to go there as soon as we can really get the deal done, so, which, which requires a zoning change. Some values that, I mean, everyone, I probably don't have to convince everybody, Chick-fil-A's core values really line up with Friendswood. We think it's a great use for Friendswood. They're always the first to step up when you do fundraisers or anything like that, so we think that's a good thing. Economically, it has a huge impact as well. The Dixie Farm store, which is close to here, they did almost nine million in revenue in 2016, which would equate to over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in just sales tax revenue annually for the city. Not to mention twenty-five thousand in property tax for the FISD and the city. And those numbers are just based on some Chick-fil-A's values in the area. So, yeah, our intent is to try to pursue those uses. We think it's a great fit. We know the demand's there. We've, we've, we haven't really marketed the site, because we didn't want to get a bunch of people stirred up. I mean, it's our business, talking to these people, so we don't want to tell them we have something and not be able to deliver. The two other uses we have reached out to had huge interest and wanted to be a part of it. So we know the demand's there, and we think it's a good fit, so, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay. We'll take comments from the public. So let's start with comments in favor of the zone change. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? You want to come to the microphone, state your name. And if anybody else, if you want to just line up along the wall, so we can go through them quickly, that would be a great help. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. I'm Lila Beverly. This is my husband Brett Beverly, and we are the owners of Bahama Bucks. We have a store in Lake City, and we have a store in Pearland. We actually live here in West Ranch, so we are in the community. Our daughter goes to FJH. So we are really interested in being in this area, so we're, we really find that a huge value in this intersection, and had told that and shared that to Vergata Properties. One of the things I'll mention, too, you talked about Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A, I know the owner of Chick-fil-A. I do all of his company picnics. So we're actually doing it at Stevenson Park on August 27th, here in Friendswood, so I can bring my product from the Lake City store for his Dixie Farm staff party. We have the same core values. They are, just like Chick-fil-A, Bahama Bucks is also a faith-based business. We employ ninety youth between our two stores. So I found that it would be really beneficial to the Friendswood community to know that your high school kids are working in an environment and can find local employment close to home, close to school, and fun. We are very active in making sure we teach them life skills and, as well. So I think it's really important to share that with everyone here in Friendswood. Our Lake City store's been very successful. It's on 96. We partner with the city. We help them fund the dog park, which is actually right here on 518 and 528, on the edge of Friendswood. So I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that, too, that the community involvement that we do from Bahama Bucks' perspective is the whole reason why we actually even were involved with Bahama Bucks. I actually work in healthcare here in the area, and Brett also works as well in the crane business. And so for us, having a dessert business and being involved in the community other ways is really important for us. So we were here to listen and also make sure that everyone knew that we were really interested in favor of making this retail position or establishment area for us to participate in and be involved in the community, because we're trying to find the perfect spot in Friendswood for us, since we live in Friendswood. And that, to us, is the sweet spot, if you will. So, those were the most things I wanted to touch on. I heard earlier today, he mentioned the downtown mission statement. I know that that's not necessarily downtown, but he talked about family businesses with beautiful landscapes. So... about family businesses with beautiful landscapes, so this is right up our alley. We are a family business. We live here in Friendswood, and we really would like to be in this area. I think that those opposed to it might find value in the fact that their kids can ride their bikes, get a snow cone, get a smoothie. If you don't know what Bahama Bucks is, it's a dessert business. They can get a fruit cup. There's all kinds of options. We're open year-round, and we're open seven days a week. The option of being closed on Sundays, too, so very much like a Chick-fil-A. So we wanted to make sure we shared that with everybody, and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Skip Evans. I am a resident of Eagles Point, have been for thirty-six years. It was a bald prairie when I moved in over there, now it's grown up to a subdivision. And I'd like to put my voice in favor of the zone change for very, very many of the same reasons. As you know, or most, I'm sure all of you know that I'm on the Community Economic Development Committee, and it's somewhat of a, it's not an easy thing, getting businesses to relocate to Friendswood. You all know that. You know what we've been up against, and you've seen, seen this happen over the years. And surveys that we've, we've done, the city has done, show that one of the prime things that the residents of Friendswood want, all the residents of Friendswood want, is more restaurants. And Chick-fil-A certainly is, falls into that category, and as mentioned previously, the kind of restaurant, the kind of business that they run is really that fits in with Friendswood. The way, as, as we mentioned before, and I'd like to reiterate that, the way Chick-fil-A runs their business is, is, you know, fits in with our lifestyle, closed on Sundays, employs a lot of young people in the town to work at some very reasonable wages, and also gives them a, the training to get them off to a good start, as far as developing a career and some, and some business acumen. We had somebody come to the CEDC meeting, who, before they moved back to Friendswood, worked up in Tennessee for a, I think it was either a hotel or something along those lines, and she did a lot of the recruiting and hiring. And she said that if somebody came into their facility looking for a job, if they had Chick-fil-A on their resume, they went immediately to the top of the list. They would interview the Chick-fil-A ex-people before they would touch anybody else, because of the training that they get from Chick-fil-A and how, and how they learn to handle themselves in a business environment. So, you know, they, it's, it's a great training ground for kids. I believe they pay, from what I've heard, more than anybody else I've heard around this area, as far as, you know, high school kids and college kids. Number I heard was thirteen ninety-five an hour. I don't think there's too many, too many businesses out there that are offering high school kids thirteen ninety-five an hour. The pros and cons of the change are significant, because we have a minimal amount of commercial property left in this town, as you all know. And the five eighteen, five twenty-eight corner is one of the prime locations in town for commercial property. And here we have a prime organization that could put something in that would be a benefit to everybody and would be for all the residents. I, as, as I, as I said earlier, I live in Eagles Point. I know there are a fair number of people in my subdivision who are against it, but some of those people are also against the nice concrete wall we have out front that, that now, you know, replaced our falling-down cedar fences. So, you know, we, we have had changes in the past that haven't necessarily always been totally supported. But anyway, the city of Friendswood would benefit greatly by, by adding that thing. As somebody mentioned the other day, somebody who's on, on our committee said, there's some concern about the traffic that might be generated around, around that, that restaurant at certain times. They said, well, it would, if it went in, it would eliminate all the traffic down Friendswood Drive, driving to Pearland to go to the Chick-fil-A down in Pearland. So anyway, I'd, again, just like to say that I, I, as, as a resident of Eagles Point, and as a member of the Community Economic Development Committee, I support the zone change and hope that we will bring this commercial operation to our city. I think it would be a great benefit to, not only from a financial standpoint, which as I mentioned earlier, is huge compared to any other business we've been looking at to put in there, but also just the overall, Chick-fil-A would fit in with Friendswood very, very well. Thank you.
Hello. My name's James Wiley. I've been in Friendswood for now, going on seven years. I wasn't born and raised here. I was pretty close by, but I married my wife, who was born and raised in Friendswood, which is what brought us back here. We're in favor of this zoning change, partly because of Chick-fil-A, yes or no, but also that restaurant interest. We have a dual-income family, so both of us are working full-time, and five young children. So, yes, five children, six and under. So, needless to say, we spend a lot of time at the other Chick-fil-A, as can be interested, but also just in restaurants and multiple days in order and out. And part of it's thought to the possibility of having a development with restaurants and also that green space, because we love to pick up our food, take our kids to the park, and have a good time, and just enjoy being in this weather that we have. So, I guess that's just short and sweet to why we're in favor of that possibility of not just more office complex, with something that a young family like myself, I have two in the school, two in the ISD now. Like I said, at one point, I will have five in this ISD, because we have no intentions on leaving. So this could provide a long-term place for my family to gather. And even speaking with some of the youth ministers in the areas, what other hangouts do they have? A lot of times, we have Stevenson Park or Dunn Brothers. So some other quality place that they could possibly go, keep dollars here locally, from, should I say, most of our parents, us being parents, our dollars locally, and being able to just hang out and stay close to where we know where they are, and provide families like myself a place to go.
Mayor Holland, Aaron Smith, this is Council, wanted to just kind of throw out some, I've been in Friendswood for thirty-five years. David Boon was my, in my first young life group when we went to Colorado together. His family's one of a kind. I think Chick-fil-A not only represents the kind of people the Boons are, and the kind of people that live in Friendswood, but the kind of businesses we want here. We have national holdings all over the United States. I can live anywhere I want. I live in Friendswood for one reason, because Friendswood is Davy Boon. Friendswood's Kevin Holland. Friendswood is Mr. Lee, everybody that's in this room that I've known my whole life, grew up with Melinda. If that property, and I don't know a lot about it, if that property's owned commercial, what other type of commercial use do you want that would be better than Chick-fil-A? Pick one, tell me what it is. If you can convince me or anybody else that there's a better business that fits Friendswood and the people that live here, better than Chick-fil-A, I would really like to know, because I want to buy their stock.
Okay, at this time, we'll take comments in opposition to the zone change. Is there anybody that would like to address Council and the commission? Again, if you guys, if you'll just step to the microphone and state your name, and...
Hello, everyone. My name's Santos Venegas. Thank you for allowing me to address you. I am a citizen of Friendswood. I came here first in nineteen eighty-four, and I live in Eagles Point subdivision. And it's great to hear everything about this, this property. It's awesome, great to hear there, but it wants to make it commercial. But I do want to just remind everybody, planning and zoning, and also City Council, that there's actually some homework to do before making that type of a decision. You know, that, that property is, right now, OPD for a reason, and I do just, just beg of you to, to do your research, you know, look at your facts, that there's a lot of facts in there that's there for a reason, right? And, and making a change like that does have some implications, you know. Doing a development like that does have some implications as well. And I'll refer back to the statutory basis, chapter two thirteen of the Texas Local Government Code, right, that, that allows to, to do the, the comprehensive plan for those areas and to, to set them in such a way to promote public health, safety, and welfare. Okay? And I'll leave you with the Texas Code appeals of Mayhew versus the town of Sunnyvale, right? They went through a similar situation, and I just would hate to, for us to have to go through that, right? I mean, things were there for a reason. They were set their way. Please do your homework before you vote, whether it's for or against this own change. Thank you.
I don't intend to be a speech. My name is Miriam Sam. I live within the two hundred feet of the requested rezone of the Howard subdivision. I'm here again to orally express my opposition to the rezone. Last week, I, along with several concerned neighbors, met with the Vergata developer, Mr. Jim Peterson, and I told him that I would be here to oppose. He revealed what his intentions with respect to the development are. I found several of his statements to be interesting, if I put it mildly. He talked about his right to request the land to be rezoned, just as we had a right to express our opposition. He also stated that if he is successful in getting the rezone, it would be more profitable for him. And that's only fair. I understand business well. This conversation led me to ponder a few things that I'd like to verbalize today. Vergata talked about the results of the traffic study they paid for. I don't know if this was in any way to provide any relevant information to the community or for his sales pitch to potential investors. He talked about an increase in traffic, and I was just curious if we were going to talk about if City Council has spoken to the school district. Not too long ago, Klein Elementary had an issue with children getting to school on time, so much so that the principal had to send a very strong letter to parents, informing us or reminding us that state funding comes to the schools based on attendance, and tardiness impacts that negatively. So I just ask that we follow through on what this increase in traffic will do to children getting to school. I know we already have some issues with the Friendswood Junior High School and some of the neighbors in Polly Ranch attempting to exit the neighborhood at that time of the morning. Also, during our discussion with the developer, we talked extensively about the detention pond and how it isn't the responsibility of the grocery store, the new urgent care clinic going in, or a Vergata. So whose responsibility is it? I'm concerned, because there have been children, I've seen them, skateboarding along that platform right outside of that detention pond. What's interesting to note is how the developers of the two other lots have chosen to secure their equipment, their self-interest, if I use your words, with temporary fencing. But the developers who relied on that detention pond for their development haven't taken any interest in erecting any temporary fencing to secure the lives of children. Now, if, I don't know if you've all seen this pond, but if anybody falls in there, they're, they're not getting out. Just Friday, a six-year-old child, a special-needs child, drowned in a detention pond outside of their neighborhood in Florida. We have a special-needs child that lives on the corner of our neighborhood, right in front of that pond. For children under the age of six, drowning is the number-one cause of death. And I don't know if this is something, you know, we, we need to talk about it collectively as a community, because I find it strange that community swimming pools require fencing, but retention ponds don't. This retention pond outside of our neighborhood, neighborhood has no safety measures to protect anyone from falling in. I just think that it's time that we, as a people, put people over the false promises of profits. Along those lines, City Council, well, but you bring, he brought up a good point as well. Last week, he said that Mr. Howard would be happy to just give away the detention pond, but today, he says that it's in the best interest of protecting it and that it's valuable, so if it were so valuable, I don't know why it wasn't acquired with the four acres. Along those lines, City Council, I think that we need to think about how we approach growth. Cities talk a lot about how they should reside within some algorithm of commercial to residential. Exactly why? Have we researched the decline in restaurant attendance? Peoples may say on a survey that they want more restaurant options, but the numbers show people, people visiting restaurants less. The numbers show an increase in restaurants. People are getting more healthy with their options. They're looking for already prepared, healthy options. People's buying patterns are shifting, and I think it's important that we recognize that. And it's become increasingly easy to eat healthy at home. We see it from the ship shoppers at our HEB. You can pull up curbside at Kroger, Walmart, and get your groceries. I mean, I think, what is it, Blue Apron is going IPO this year? I mean, if anybody's ordered any of their food, their recipes are really hard, and their portions are really small. But I think that buying patterns are shifting. You know, we talk about, you've got some dinosaurs, Sears, JCPenney. A lot of malls are going vacant now. The developer talked about how profitable that five eighteen and five twenty-eight intersection is, but we see restaurants going out of business constantly. So if it were so profitable, no one would ever go out of business there. Finally, my husband and I dabble in real estate investing. We own a few homes, one of which is in a prime area of Houston. However, we live in Friendswood because of the intrinsic value that Friendswood, Friendswood provides. We are in a great area, safe community to raise our family, and great public schools to educate our kids. As a real estate investor, I understand profits very well, but as a woman of faith, the tenants of my faith are what guide my life. You may have a, we may have a tenant who, I know that market rate is higher, and I can raise their rents, but you know what? They pay on time, and they've been there for years. Sometimes doing, well, many times, doing the right thing is what you're supposed to do. I think it's important that the city upholds its commitment to the people, and that's maintaining that area as OPD. Friendswood is a community that I feel shares in my values. When Vergata purchased the Howard subdivision, they purchased it knowing it was OPD. When we talked, he actually told us what plans he'd have to develop it OPD, which would be probably a bank or, or some other options that he had. When I look on their website, they don't show any Chick-fil-A's ever being built in the past. They also don't show any of the businesses that I believe he's fear-mongering of saying what he could put there. When I purchased my home, I purchased it knowing it's residential property, and I respect that. Going back to Vergata's comment that it's his right to request a rezone, it too is my right to run for HOA in my community and ask that my neighbors and I come to City Council and rezone our backyards to OPD so that we can also run a business, and, you know, maybe I'll, I'll tell you, I'll promise you, you know, some extra tax base, but that's not right. The city has documented, documented in the Code of Ordinances, a definition for OPD that states that OPD is ideally suited as a buffer between commercial and residential areas. I'm not asking for a rezone. We're just asking that the commitment be upheld and that it remains how it is. We shouldn't be swayed by speculation and discussions about certain companies wanting to operate in Friendswood. I've seen no documented proof of any commitment from any company. I look at this community and see how many churches line our city, and that's a reminder that we believe in loving thy neighbor. I'm your closest neighbor, and I ask that you love thy neighbor, and that City Council continue to vote its values.
Good evening. I'm Jodi Kuchta. I've been a resident of Eagles Cove for twenty years, resident of Friendswood for forty. When I purchased my home, I purchased it knowing that, that vacant ought was going to only be office development. I was not aware that the city, in their future vision, which they've not yet completely approved, was going, intended to zone it, uh, commercial. It really disturbs me that the traffic is so heavy that I can't even turn right going out of Leisure Lane. I, I can't turn left because of the traffic, and even turning right, the traffic builds up, especially during the school time, and when the, the church across the street lets out of their school and then our school, it, the traffic is just horrendous. And I think that putting a Chick-fil-A there would increase that traffic. When I spoke with, that, in that meeting with Vergata, which was very nice of them to come and speak with us, they said that the Chick-fil-A could increase traffic up to a hundred and ten cars per hour. Now, we already have enough traffic through that intersection. The only other option- The only other option that I could see that would be viable would be closing off Leisure Lane to through traffic. And I don't think that people would approve of that. I just, I just feel that a Chick-fil-A really brings a lot of traffic. I like the business. I eat there, and I have no problem with Chick-fil-A. I just wish it would go in someone else's backyard. Thank you.
I'm Mike Kuchta. They're some nice people. I've lived in the same house about 20 years. My house, basically, my far property line runs pretty close to Leisure Lane. I don't follow Friendswood politics. I don't go to city council meetings. I have no idea what you're doing until it affects me. When it affects me, then I have to have a response. Since the last zoning rehearing, I've made several requests to the city under the Freedom of Information Act. I've talked to city, county, and the state of Texas about the procedures that must be followed to do what these folks are planning to do. I've consulted with attorneys and investigated ongoing legal actions and settlements by the city of Friendswood over the last couple of years. And in my opinion, all of the previous cases could have been avoided by not putting the want of a few over the rights of the people, would it affect? That's why I asked you today to stop another bad idea from happening because in the end, all it's going to do is cost more money, generate more bad feelings than any benefit promised or by the proposed zoning change. Guys need to think this one out. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Chris Sam, 106 Eagles Cove. My property backs right up to the proposed zoning site. I'm going to be brief. I'm just here to ask you to keep your commitment. You bought it OPD, let's keep it OPD. Is there anyone in this room that is a representative from Chick-fil-A? Raise your hand. Nobody. I work for Bristol Myers Squibb, one of the largest pharmaceutical companies in the world. If they were going to do a deal in Friendswood, they would be in Friendswood. I know it's warm and fuzzy. We all like chicken and biscuits. I love them. But he bought it OPD, let's keep it OPD. All we're asking is that you keep your commitment to the citizens. That's supposed to be a buffer. We haven't really gotten into, deeply into the safety and the traffic issues. If you have kids in junior high, they go to Friendswood Junior High, you know that 518 in the morning, there's a traffic cop out there. There's a traffic cop for a major reason because they cannot control the intersection currently. So have we, have we done a bus route study with Friendswood ISD? How will this impact the bus? We haven't. So all I'm asking you to do is keep your commitment to the citizens. Keep your word and don't rezone. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Jenny Weest, and I live at 1806 Talent Drive. I'm not here to talk about chicken. I'm here to talk about just safety and logistics. I just want to make sure you guys understand, so we live in Eagles Cove, and I want to draw a map with my hands here. So in the morning, we go up Leisure Lane, and we're wanting to go either, either direction on to 518. Okay, that's, that's pretty much how you get out of our way, our neighborhood. We cannot turn right, and this is during school. We cannot turn right readily because the traffic is backed up all the way from 528 past Leisure Lane, and sometimes it can even get close to Eagle Lakes, okay? So, and then that also, since we don't have a light or anything, you can't, you can't turn left to go to the junior high, and I've got two at junior high, so I've got to figure out how to get out of there or get there next year. But if, if we add 105 or 110 cars per hour during the peak hours, which they were saying between seven and nine and four to 6:00 PM, I'm afraid that people, we're all Americans, we want to do everything really fast. Everyone's going to try and figure out how to dunk out of the traffic jam that exists there each time. So they're going to want to cut down Leisure Lane and then go out through Winding Way. In the, we've got, in just like nine houses closest to the property that we're talking about, we've got 17 kids right there, and that's just those, those nine houses. Those, these kids ride bikes. We like our neighborhood. We like the, the good Friendswood feel of our neighborhood. Please, if you're going to go ahead, we know development's going to happen, but if you're going to go ahead with the restaurants or whatever, I would like to request that you do not allow a curb cut from Leisure Lane into whatever they make there because I think that people are going to dodge in and out and go both directions. That's where we live. That's where our kids are. So I would just like to keep that in mind for the planning and zoning, so. Alright, thanks.
Good evening. I know this has been a very long meeting for you all, so I appreciate your attention. My name is Judith Oppenheim. My husband and I live on Hunt Drive. We're neighbors of Skip Evans and a number of other speakers. And I don't have anything new to say, but I'm going to reorganize and summarize points that you've already heard. The first, the reason why we're here is because this lot is a prime location. And I think that this is a point that nobody is going to argue about. And why was it zoned OPD if it's such a great location? Because of the buffering property or the buffering character that an OPD zoning carries with it. Miriam talked about the, the water, the detention pond. That is an accident waiting to happen. It, it is very serious, the way it's completely open, and people are going out there and, and playing, and I, I think that needs to be looked at regardless of the decision that's made between tonight and in September. Now, we heard that density is, and usage is the main, the main point that distinguishes OPD versus CSC as far as the construction goes and all the requirements vis-à-vis access. One thing that's different is the number of parking spaces. And for a restaurant, you need to have more parking than with a, an office building. And more parking equals more cars, and more cars equals more traffic. I did some reading over the weekend about what causes gridlock. And when you have lanes that cannot clear through a cycle of the lights, that's what creates gridlock. And some of my neighbors have talked about the fact that they cannot make a right turn, they cannot make a left turn, so it starts growing into the neighborhood. And so this is encroachment that development causes. And it's this kind of encroachment that affects the quality of life in Friendswood. Now, I heard at the very beginning of this session about how we want to have unique businesses. We want to have a family-friendly environment. Of course we do, but it's the quality of life. It's what we started out the meeting about. And I'd like to end, and thanks for listening.
My name is Cheryl Rowland. I live in Eagles Point subdivision also. I want to start out by saying that this rezoning is not about a Chick-fil-A. It's really irritating that it seems like that's the, the big point of it all. Chick-fil-A is great, would probably be a great add to Friendswood, but just not at this location. This is about the city following its comprehensive plan. It's about the city following its own vision plan. And it's about the city council not arbitrarily changing the zoning to accommodate developers and businesses at the expense of their residents. Each one of you city council members are elected officials, and you have a duty to represent the best interest of the citizens. This rezoning goes against the intended use of the property, and it goes against the infrastructure that is in place to support a commercial shopping center. Howard subdivision is zoned OPD for a reason. In 1970, Howard subdivision was originally zoned CSC. Somewhere between 1977 and 1984, the land got rezoned to OPD. Eagles Point subdivision was recorded in 1979. I don't think it's a coincidence that the city rezoned this property from CSC to OPD at the same exact time that Eagles Point subdivision was being developed. This land was zoned OPD for a purpose, to be the buffer for the residents of our subdivision and the surrounding homes. This buffer protects our land values and our aesthetics. Leisure Lane is a residential road. It's not a thoroughfare. You have to look behind the screen to see the reason behind the property and why it was zoned OPD to begin with. There's no denying that the filing of this, or the purchase of this reduced parcel of land was due to omit landowners that were initially against the rezoning. Reducing it meant that homeowners who initially protested were now excluded from doing so because they fell outside the 20%. If you approve the rezoning, you're telling developers to be creative, to get what they want, to back out of and not purchase a retention pond that a developer that doesn't want it will keep, or the owner of the property will keep just so that he can sell off the rest of his land. You're, you're encouraging this sort of thing to happen in the future. The residents of this town are your bread and butter. Businesses are the icing. It's not the other way around, and if you start catering to the developers and compromising the laws and the regulations of this city, you're saying that they're more important than the residents. You will set a precedence that will cause the city further issues down the road. Chick-fil-A has been Vergata's ace in the hole, and frankly, it's been a great marketing tool. Everybody seems to love Chick-fil-A. But today it's Chick-fil-A, tomorrow it's going to be a different fast food restaurant at the top of the food chain that everybody loves. Don't compromise the value that this city holds dear for a fast food chain. My hope is that when you look, when you think about it long and hard, you'll ask yourself, why does this piece of property have to be rezoned at the expense of all the residents that it affects? Thank you.
My name's Roxanne Gill. I live on Leisure. We bought there in 1998. Your home is your number one investment, and we bought in there just like you buy into a neighborhood expecting a HOA to protect the inside of a neighborhood. You buy into the city expecting the city to protect the outside of the neighborhood, which is why it is zoned OPD and should not be changed to a CSC because it serves as a buffer. OPD historically does not change the value of a neighborhood, but when you change it to a CSC immediately next door, it seems to devalue the neighborhoods. And that is, if you go do the research, you can find the information. So it would be a negative impact on the neighborhood, a negative impact on Friendswood because basically you're setting the tone that you might go do this elsewhere as well. Why would people buy into the city if you're not going to follow the comprehensive plan, the future land use, and the zoning regulations currently in place? Additionally, the zoning did do an analysis, and in it, it does state that it does not fit the future land use, but it fits the Vision 2020 Plan. However, the city has not been consistently following the 2020 Plan. And an OPD does fit the 2020 Plan as well. Also, TechStop says that historically, when they reach 25,000 cars at the traffic count, is when they start doing, expanding the lanes from four lanes to six lanes. Currently, the 518 south of 528, which is this area we're talking about, the traffic count for 2016 is 23,710. With this additional traffic, the fact that we haven't finished developing out West Ranch, what impact will Lidl have? Will we reach 25,000? Then we have to have TechStop come in, imminent domain takes place. The land in question might actually lose some of its own land because they're going to expand the lanes along with Hope Lutheran Church and what other businesses. So we might eventually actually lose the tax revenue that we're trying to gain by not properly planning. I'm all for bringing in more tax revenue, but we need to spread the city out and not congest one area. Additionally, as Mr. Boone pointed out, that pond that kids like to come play at, well, will kids now start walking from the junior high to this restaurant in traffic? And what about Leisure Lane is, per the future land map, it is a minor residential road. And traffic is to be led away from the sixth neighborhood it serves. It would become a cut through, and it doesn't even have sidewalks. It would be more of a danger to the kids in the neighborhoods. And all of us are walkers and bikers. We have kids that are on that road. So anyway, in the long run, if we do this, we might actually lose tax revenue as we drive businesses away as they lose some of their property. And where are they going to relocate, you know? So anyway, I ask that you do not rezone from OPD to CSC. And as somebody who has my backyard two OPDs, I can attest to the fact that once they put in the bigger building that Jim Peterson mentioned, they actually protected us from the lighting, the noise, the dumpster noise, and the road traffic because the buildings were more expansive. When you put in the smaller ones, the lighting, the odors, and everything else will come through. So OPD serves its purpose. It protects the neighborhood. It protects the value. And I think the city needs to do, like I said, just like a HOA protects the inside of a neighborhood, zoning, comprehensive planning, and the future land map protects the outside of the neighborhood. And if you want people to continue to come to the city, then you need to protect their biggest investment. Thank you.
I have a card and to speak on something else, but I would like to speak about this since it is part of Friendswood. David Allen, I live in Friendswood at the other end by Pearland. Yeah, Chick-fil-A, of course, sounds wonderful. The retention pond being an orphan doesn't sound good. I think with that revenue stream and with that large corporation behind it should go the, the ownership of the retention pond. I'm sure Chick-fil-A, having built places all around the country and in all climates in places like ours that need that pond, has plans to make safe, beautiful, or acceptably good-looking retention ponds and, and safety for the people that it attracts. You know, obviously, this restaurant's going to attract a lot of young folks and people that would want to jump in there and do things. So I would say, consider having it hooked with the restaurant and the land because they then can manage it. They've got to have plans from across the country. It's already studied out. Second of all, like the lady said, we're apparently on the sixth lane, verge of six lanes at that intersection, and a thorough traffic study of the effects of this restaurant needs to be done before maybe rezoning. And finally, my first degree's in forestry. Italian cypress, you have a couple of feet of good topsoil around the outside. You can put a really beautiful, so sort of a light green color, tall evergreen thing. That, you could take care of the visual barrier pretty easily. And one final thing, my sister lives in Seabrook, and the school in there put in a new air conditioning system that I think it uses electricity while it's cheaper at night, and it makes ice. And then they run the, they melt the ice during the day to cool the school. But the compressor that they put in at back of that junior high school, they did not have a noise specification. That thing is loud, and her backyard fronts onto the back of that school. And it's just, it's a forever noise. So whatever goes in that place, if it's near homes, those air conditioning units or anything, the blowers, whatever they have, have to have a noise specification to keep it. It's very easy to do if you do it from the beginning. You can't really undo it. But have a noise specification, so visual, noise, maybe odor, I don't know. But then, and then that, that lake has got to go with the responsible, able to pay. That way, we don't have to sit around and pay or wonder who, who takes care of it because they've got to have plans from across the country.
Thank you. Any other comments in opposition?
Any other comments in opposition? Mr. Mayor, can I move on to item B?
Please.
7B, amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, ordinance of the City of Friendswood Code of Ordinances. And we have two items, A and B. Section 8 supplementary district regulations, A, visibility at intersections in residential districts, and B, fences, walls, and hedges. And section 20 definitions, II for fence. Aubrey, you want to kick us off?
Yes, ma'am. This proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance is the result of a work session that we held in September of last year with city council. Currently, our zoning ordinance requires a residential property to have a minimum of two acres to be able to construct a fence along their front property line, or unless they front a designated roadway. The work session, the result of that was council expressed a desire to add an "or" statement, also allow fences along the front property line if an owner has a minimum street frontage distance. So at the time, the suggestion was of 120 feet was made. Commission and staff spent time compiling some data regarding existing non-conforming fences and the effect that changing the ordinance would have on the community. Staff recommended usually utilizing 150 feet of street frontage rather than the 120. It's a little more restrictive, doesn't open up, you know, quite as many properties to have fences on their front property lines. And it's also consistent with the lot requirements for the SFRE zoning. Comes from our residential regulation matrix. The two-acre minimum comes from that as well. So SFRE zoning, the minimum lot size is two acres and 150 feet of street frontage. So it's just consistency. Additionally, while we were reviewing the ordinances, a few other amendments are being proposed as part of that change, to remove hedges from section B and adding them to section A. Regulating hedges is difficult because a building permit is not required to plant hedges. Another item was to allow decorative transparent fences on residential lots that are two acres or greater or have the minimum lot frontage. There is no maximum fence height. And then we also proposing, excuse me, to prohibit chain link and barbed wire fences in those residential districts. We're adding a note, an exception note, allowing the owner of a residential lot to construct a fence. If they're adjoining neighbors, meet the requirements and have compliant fences as well. Kind of an odd man out clause. And then section 20 was to improve the definition of fence.
Okay. At this time, we'd be happy to hear from the public, any, anyone that wants to speak in favor of the ordinance change for fences. Hearing none, anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the fence change, change in the fence ordinance? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Yeah. Sorry.
Does the, so the original direction by council was to change it to 120 feet, and now it's been adjusted to 150 feet?
Correct.
The original adjustment was made for a property that was on Cowards Creek, had a petition and had a problem. Does going to 150 feet, is she still covered?
Yes.
So she will be allowed to keep her fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Okay, we are adjourned, and we'll meet upstairs on the second floor.
And just a reminder, the only item we're considering upstairs is the fence ordinance tonight.
Thank you all very much. Item 8, communication from the public to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. City council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Then David Allen's next, and then Steve Bell's next.
Hi, I'm Sharice Edwards-Horning.
James, James, can you shut them doors?
This is concerning the bridge at Mandell. I want to thank you for allowing me to come and fight for those that has signed it and have not signed the petition that's going around to close it. They haven't been there very long, and I've been there since the 60s. And I've sat on Vision 2020, and we've tried to do everything we can out there to make it a good neighborhood. But there's things that they don't, they're not aware of, and here's just a few points. That is our evacuation route. On Tower Drive, Estate Drive, and Canal, we just hit 528, even if we went Mandell. With that bridge closed, when we had the pipeline explosion, that was our evacuation route. When you guys have lifelight coming and you close us down from 35 to Sun Meadows or even to More Road, you just leave us sitting ducks. But I have elders on my street that go all the way down there and go to that light because they feel more secure about coming out to get out of, on the road, because it's pretty hard going across four lanes at that age. They've never lived through a flood or a fire, the pipeline explosion, the workover rig explosions, or lifelight coming down. And I'm not sure, but with all the traffic here on 528, I would never come all the way through town and then go all the way through town to try to get to 2351, when, when I can be there in 11 minutes on 2351, the back roads. I just, you know, when Ron Carter was running the trucks through there, I just went over to Alvin Rotary, and I kind of told Frank, I said, hey, check out the 20 cars that went through my neighborhood. And he said, that'll never happen again. And it didn't. They go up victory, and they come down and go around. So I mean, all we really need to do is, you know, just go where the problem is. The people that are in the new area, they're the ones that brought the attention to that road. We really didn't have that problem until they started building and tearing up the bridge. The bridge's been there a long time, and since they've been building out there, we've had, the city or somebody's had to fix it twice. So I mean, I just want to fight for the ones that have signed it and the ones that haven't, because they haven't lived out there, and they don't have a clue what they're going to have to go through if, if they just need it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sharice. David Allen, then Steve Bell, then Margie Legio?
Thank you. David Allen, we know that in the redevelopment in Pearland, the symbol is a polymer pear. It seems to be in front of everything. Like in Seabrook, it's the polymer pelican. So we're going to have to think of something for here, maybe a polymer oak tree that's not too big or something. StJohnHunt.net. StJohnHunt is, is the son, about my age, about 60, is a son of E. Howard Hunt, who was a famous CIA spy, especially in China when it was turning into Red China. Him and his wife were a tremendous team. And the Mission Impossible TV show of the 60s and 70s was based, Ethan Hunt, E.T.H.A. and Ethan Hunt was based, that character was E. Howard Hunt, you know, in real life, based on that. His son, in 2007, when E. Howard Hunt passed away, his son, and you can get on StJohnHunt.net, videotaped his father, who talked of the CIA's plot when they killed Kennedy. And he says, yes, it was called The Big Event, and I was a bench warmer, E. Howard Hunt speaking. And, you know, I was not, my services weren't necessary, but I was keeping things in order and there in case they needed me. And recently, with Wolf Blitzer on CNN, former head of CIA Brennan and former NSA head Clapper said, yeah, we're going to have to take out the president here soon, because, you know, he's getting too uppity, basically. That's treason. And recently, that was about two weeks ago, and a week ago, Al Gore said, and I believe I mentioned that E. Howard Hunt said that assassinating Kennedy was codenamed The Big Event. And so Al Gore, a week ago, says, yeah, the president's got to watch out for The Big Event. Well, I don't know what's going on around here, but it's very serious. When you have people of that caliber, former vice president, former head of the CIA and former NSA, calling for, thank you, calling for decommissioning a president in the next couple of months, he needs our prayers. Andrew Jackson, he needs Andrew Jackson level protection. We know he had a lot of duels, and actually, Andrew Jackson was our only president that was a prisoner of war, British. British soldiers, officers hit him with a sword, cut to the bone here, a big slash across his head. His brother also died from a similar wound from the same officer right next to him. But when Jackson was president, and he had led the Battle of New Orleans, tremendous, Americans lost 100, the British lost 2,000. We showed them, saved our country there. The assassin against Andrew Jackson had two pistols, pulled one, it misfired, pulled the second, it misfired. And then Andrew Jackson happened to have his old Hickory cane that really went after the guy, had to pull him apart. But we need that level of protection by God over our president, in Jesus' holy name.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Bell. Those of you who attended a recent breakfast, community breakfast, recognize me from my other outfit. Thank you very much for attending, those of you on the city council. I'm with the Boy Scouts of America, and here in Bay Area Council, we call Friendswood and Pearland the Northern Star District. And I just wanted to give you a quick state of scouting message to let you know that we are alive and well, thriving in Friendswood. I have eight years' experience as a scouting professional. I'm originally from Illinois, where I worked for two other councils. And currently, I serve 1,456 Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Ventures, Sea Scouts, along with the boys and girls in Pearland. Two of the, my trusty volunteers are here in my support with me tonight, but there's not only them, but almost 400 others that provide the program to the boys and the teenage girls and boys in the venturing program. Recently, as I said before, we honored a local leader, Alton Todd, with our annual, at an annual breakfast, with our Golden Eagle Award. Raised over $21,000, just short of our goal of 25,000. But thank you very much to the community and everyone that participated in raising that money. The Bay Area Council, based in Galveston, needs the money. We pay our own bills. We're not part of the, we don't get any money from the national office in Dallas. We don't get any money from the government. It's all come from private donations and corporate, corporate funding. Recently, we held a Cub Scout Day Camp at Krista Adair Park in Pearland and served over 200 kids, the biggest in the council. We also hold a week-long and weekend camping events at our camp, Karankawa, in Sweeney, Texas. The, the service that's provided by the Boy Scouts usually averages 144 hours for an Eagle Scout project. And recently, 1,152 hours were provided by scouts to the community of Friendswood and 720 hours to churches in Friendswood, totaling 1,872 hours. We look forward to a successful recruiting season, as schools get started up again. And don't forget to buy the popcorn. Boy Scouts sell popcorn, and that helps fund their, their specific programs, as well as helps fund the council. So 100% of the, of the money generated either pays for the popcorn or goes straight back into scouting. So if anyone knows of any charter organizations, like churches, civic organizations that are, would like to, would like to sponsor a scouting unit, we'd love to talk to you. My name is Steve Bell, and you can catch me at steve.bell@scouting.org.
Hi, my name is Margie Legio, and I live at 2901 Mandell. And I'm here to present a petition from the majority of our neighbors that live on Mandell and Estate Tower and Canal, all in favor of not, the purpose of this petition is to request the City of Friendswood not to repair the bridge on Mandell Road that has been closed to the through, through traffic due to the deterioration of the bridge. The reason is to save the high cost of repairing the bridge and also eliminate the heavy traffic and speeding on the subdivision road produced by the surrounding businesses and the travelers on 528 and also on 35. By not opening Mandell Road to the through traffic will provide a safer, safer neighborhood for the families living on these streets. The business and the travelers in this area have access to the prime roads, the primary roads that are constructed for the heavy traffic and also for the higher speed that our police department can monitor better. It is a cut through for the different car dealership down the road. They cut, they do test drive down the road. We've gone down there. We've asked them to try to help keep them from doing it, and we have had lots and lots of traffic. So I'd just like to present this petition. And those were all signed by, I have gone around and got signature, and also one of our patrolmen, he's a highway department, police department, and he has gone down, and we had no one give us any opposition to all the houses. So I appreciate it, and I would hope y'all would consider it. Thank you.
Jessica Albin. Skip Evans, you good?
Hi, my name is Jessica Albin, and I'm here representing Girl Scouts. I'm part of the community leadership team for the local area, which is Friendswood, Pearland, Clear Creek, and Sage Mart. And my counterparts couldn't be here today, but we wanted to introduce ourselves to you because we use the scout house that's at 112 East Spreading Oak, that's by the Activity Center. And we would love to be a part of the discussions that move forward with what you're going to do with that space, because we have, just in Friendswood alone, we have over 600 girls that are moving through that scout house. And altogether, we have 120 troops that are benefiting from some level of participation from Friendswood. We do a lot of community service here, including my troop personally put the lending library there in Stevenson Park. They're very proud of that. That was part of their Silver Award. And so I just wanted to introduce us. We would like to be a part of that. We're not really, we're new to this whole political thing, so we're not sure how to get in, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Is that where all the cookies are made?
Yes, that's where they are made.
Connie Radisow and Philip Radisow.
Hi, thank you. I am Connie Radisow, and I wanted to speak briefly about the EMS town halls. I want to thank council member Rocky, Scott, and Foreman for the one that we had at city, at the chamber, that way. We had about 60 people there, and I wanted to thank you for including the citizens in this very important discussion, because it does affect us all, whether you're a homeowner, a renter, a house, apartment, senior citizen, all of us in City of Friendswood. We also had a virtual meeting a couple of days after the chamber meeting and had several attendees online. And I do know that there are some more that are going to be planned. I don't know if we have a date yet for those. But we also have set up today, August 20th, is going to be at Barcina's Mexican Restaurant. That's a Sunday. We invite you, if you want to come eat, it's going to be upstairs, if you'll arrive about 6:30, so we can get the orders done, RSVP, so we can have waitstaff available to take care of us. And then the meeting will start at 7:00. We have council member Rocky and Scott agreed to both the dates of August 20th at Barcina's, and then we're going to have one August 21st at Bear and then we're going to have one August 21st at Beara Paretti's. So we're trying to get the north side of City of Friendswood and the south side of City of Friendswood, and as many opportunities as we can for people to come find out the truth and the options about what's going on with our EMS services. I also want to thank Lisa Camp and the Fire Chief for their participation in these events as well. I know at Beara Paretti's, we're also going to have Steve Rocky, John Scott, and Jim Hill at Beara Paretti's on Monday evening, August 21st. We do have one more council spot available, if anybody, Mike, if you want to join us again on the 20th, that's available. So thank you very much for including us in this discussion.
I'll be quick, so we can get out of here. I wanted to voice my opposi-
Oh, yeah.
Voice my opposition to the carousel, and for two reasons. Number one, they only got a focus group of 1% of the citizens of Friendswood. I would encourage them to get a much larger group, because I don't believe there's that much support outside of the downtown area. The other thing is that what's going to happen when the ridership falls off and the expenses go up and there's not any money there, all the businesses downtown, are they going to want to keep funding it? And then what do we do when they don't want to do that, and they want to take it and move it somewhere else? What happens then? They stated that there would be no added parking, that they would dovetail with other events there to get ridership on it, and that we are, that they were including a concert venue, a little gazebo or theater there for that. We already have a gazebo in the park there that gets used now for concerts. We have an amphitheater over by the Junior High in the park there, Centennial Park, that doesn't get used that much, so there's room for all of that stuff. And we're going to lose potential, either parking space for the park, which we need now, because I know when we come to events at the park, we're hunting for a parking spot. We've gone so far as to even ride bicycles over here, just so we don't have to deal with the parking. So I ask you, when you take up this memorandum of understanding, that you think hard and fast about what's going to happen and how long that will be, because I don't believe this thing has a long life. And thank you.
City managers' report.
Mr. Mayor, very briefly, I just wanted to let folks know that the Volunteer Fire Department is moving into the new station on Whittaker Drive, and that has been going on for some time, but tomorrow's supposed to be the main move date, where they'll be relocated over to that new station on Whittaker Drive. But as far as folks are concerned, if they need them, obviously, call 911 for emergencies and 281-996-3364. Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department, not Emergency Communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Right now, recessed the city council meeting, a convene meeting of the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust, per the posted agenda. Notice is hereby given of a special meeting of the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust to be held Monday, August 7, 2017, at 7:00 PM, at the City of Friendswood City Hall 910 South, Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. For the purpose of considering the following agenda items, the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust reserves the right to retire into executive session concerning any of the agenda items whenever it is considered necessary and legally justified pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I call the meeting to order. Item 2 is consent agenda. Consider and consider action accepting the renewal offer from Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas for employee medical and pharmacy insurance. Consider action accepting the renewal offer for Guardian for employee dental insurance. Consider action to accept the renewal offer from Guardian for employee life AD&amp;D insurance. Consider action to accept the renewal offer for VSP, for employee vision insurance. Consider action to accept the renewal offer for Lincoln Financial for employee long-term disability LTD insurance. Consider action to approve contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas for ancillary products group long-term disability. Do I hear motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll make the second.
Can we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Gusterson?
Is there a representative from Blue Cross and Blue Shield or from the insurance?
No, not from the insurance.
Point of order, this is a consent agenda, no discussion.
That's correct, I'm sorry. That is correct. Consent agenda.
Making a motion to pull this item, or the approval of the medical insurance and pharmacy insurance off the consent agenda.
Hold on, Parliament.
Yes, I believe in order to discuss it, you would need to pull it to discuss it individually.
Okay, so.
That's appropriate.
Which item do you want to pull?
Item A.
Item A. Item A. You made the motion, you made the second, is that okay? Okay, now we'll discuss item A.
Sure. My understanding that Blue Cross and Blue Shield does not currently have a contract with Kelsey Seabowl, is that correct?
That is correct.
It's also come to my attention that Blue Cross and Blue Shield is terminating its contract with Memorial Hermann effective the end of this year. Is that correct?
Blue Cross, and by the way, my name is Bob Tracy, mayor, members of the city council. I've been serving your city for quite some time on a consulting capacity. And I appreciate the inquiry into this. What's going on right now is that, as all carriers do, it's the next one in line. And right now, it's Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas and Memorial Hermann. This is a very natural phenomenon that provides chaos to membership all over the place when hospital contracts come up with insurance carriers. It's been going on since the beginning of time. And right now, it's Blue Cross's turn to negotiate a new contract, starting in December of this year, with Memorial Hermann. Now, it is part of the chaos, as a benefits consultant, a life, health, and insurance counselor, and this is what I do for a living, to suffer through these moments in time, because obviously, this is a big deal. I will say this, though, that in all my years of doing business in Houston, and it's 35 years and counting, as a benefits consultant, I have never seen a hospital system the quality of Memorial Hermann. They are definitely a gold standard brand and a carrier like Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas, who combined, partner up for hundreds of millions of dollars of reimbursement to walk away from deals like this. It is going to be the nature of the negotiation. It will probably get a bit nasty. There may be some public letters developed, letters go into membership. There'll be stuff in Houston Chronicle, the Houston Business Journal, maybe even on the news. But it is the normal procedure for renewing contracts. Two years ago, it was United Healthcare. It was Aetna the year before that. It'll be Aetna the next time. So, Councilman, I do appreciate the question. My belief strongly, as your consultant, is they're going to work it out. There's just too much money here on the table.
Did they, but weren't they in this same position with Kelsey Seabowl a year ago? Or is that, has that been some long-going thing for years and years, they've just not had a?
Fair enough. The success of any health plan, our success is going to be the one based on Memorial Hermann and Blue Cross. Although Kelsey, quality vendor, I personally use them. We've never really had a big participation in Kelsey here at this city. Prior to Blue Cross in 2015, we were with Aetna, and Aetna severed their agreement with Kelsey. And that's their prerogative. The two went their different ways. So in the city right now, we have two major carriers, both Aetna and Blue Cross and Blue Shield, who are no longer contracted with Kelsey, for whatever reason. Signis contracted with Kelsey, they were not competitive in our proposal process, and United Healthcare, which they were not successful either. They had the highest proposal. So what we have here is a membership, when we looked at it about three years ago, we had less than 10% of our membership even using Kelsey. So Kelsey is not a big play on our particular group, which means that Blue Cross truly is the highest quality vendor that's going to continue this partnership, negotiating deals.
What I'm concerned about, you said you've never seen this, but I do remember hearing about these things in the past, where these things will certainly go past the deadline, they break a contract, or they terminate a contract.
Maybe even go a 30-day extension.
Yeah. How far off was the next highest bidder?
I think it was 3%.
3.3% to 3%.
Yeah, and that was with Aetna, I believe.
And Aetna's getting ready to go into contract negotiations.
Believe me, we're going to run into the same thing, because Aetna's rolling next.
The year from now?
During the course of the next year, their contract's going to be coming up. Councilman, I appreciate what you're saying.
Now, what I'm trying to make sure that we don't do is commit our employees to a health insurance plan, only to find out come January, when this thing takes effect, that they don't have access to-
Memorial Hermann.
Memorial Hermann, which I believe, which number I was given, actually, I don't have the percentage here, it's on, no, maybe I do. 25% of the care in the Houston area?
It's a big one.
Yeah.
They're not going to walk away from it. I mean, they're not, you know.
I'd feel a lot better about it if they had this worked out ahead of time. And it's not, I mean, is there any reason we can't push this out 30 days and wait and see what happens?
No, because it's probably going to happen on the midnight, on the day before the contract expires.
What date is that?
December, later on this year.
Have other cities approved, are the cities in this agreement that we're in aware of this problem with Blue Cross and Blue Shield?
Yes, I mean, everybody, it's all, it's all going across the line, as far as, all that information is very public knowledge at this point, and we're not-
Well, it may be public knowledge, and it was public knowledge, I didn't find out about it until, I mean, I don't go researching this stuff unless it pops up, and I have a need to know. But can you take with a high level of comfort that every member of the other city councils are aware of this problem?
Well, first of all, we're not tethered with any other city on this contract. Everybody's going directly to their cities, they're awarding contracts based on their direct contract. This is not a inter-local anymore, from that standpoint.
Okay.
We're very open, and we're very open to make sure that everybody understands what's going on here. But again, this is one of those deals, that's the nature of the beast. It is just not going to be a business decision that is going to happen. It's just we're caught in this situation where we're renewing a contract at this period of time.
Councilman Gusterson? Are you done?
Yeah, I suppose I am. I'm not comfortable with this. So not having this wrapped up.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda, minus A. All those in favor? All those opposed? Show that to be unanimous. Item A, we have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second again.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be 6-1.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir.
We're going to adjourn the Employee Benefits Trust agenda. And reconvene the city council meeting. Yes.
I've been here. My latest one, you had it through.
Right, 11. Discussion of possible action regarding authorizing the monthly transfer funds from the City of Friendswood to the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust. Do I hear motion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. We've done 12 already. Discussion of possible action regarding approving a Chapter 380 Business Incentive Grant Application for Economic Development. 12. Got a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. 14. Discussion of possible action regarding approving an agreement with Gulf Coast Water Authority to replace the Mandel Bridge dire motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make the second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott, then Councilmember Rocky, go ahead.
So if we approve this, we're approving the reconstruction of the Mandel Bridge?
We pay 10% of it, the Gulf Coast Water Authority pays 90% of it.
And?
80, 80/20, Your Honor.
Well, if you look at the numbers, it's $290,000. We pay 29, that's 10%.
Right.
Okay, and the residents who brought the petition before city council today, I think that we need time to look into the-
Is there a timeframe on this deal with Gulf Coast Water Authority?
Can it wait a month?
It can.
I would ask, make a motion that we table.
Second. Okay, and?
Wait to vote the motion.
Pardon me?
To vote that motion.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Get with the city attorney, please, and find out what this, all the names, what that means to us as the council, and I would-
Verify addresses.
Yeah, I would direct, Mary Kay, there's points of egress that one applicant or one person was talking about, when the floods, they can't get out, egress. Would you please clarify that for us, too? Councilwoman Brantson?
I'd like to hear what our press response would say about that.
Yes. There is.
Did I agree with you?
The stars are aligned. Discussion of possible action-
Saw a pig fly by.
Discussion of possible action regarding approving an interlocal agreement with the Houston-Galveston Subsidence District to participate-
No. No, it's not.
Whoa, whoa. Participate in the water wise conservation program and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, and a third. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. You. Consideration of possible action regarding the following, Resolution 2017-18, resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas hereby designating Sally Branson as representative and Mike Foreman as alternate to the Houston-Galveston Area Council 2017 General Assembly and Board of Directors. I make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? You can make this one. Resolution 2017-19, resolution of city council, the City of Friendswood, Texas, approving the public funds management investment policy.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? You're always in the game. Consideration of possible action regarding second and final reading of an ordinance providing a non-substantive revision of the city charter. They were grammar-oriented. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Ordinance 2017-22, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances in the City of Friendswood to allow existing billboards to convert to C-V-E-M-S signs.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, we got to wait on P&amp;Z on this one, or did you get it?
We're here.
What'd they say? What'd they say?
It's a little confusing.
A little confusing?
Yeah, they voted on it in three sections.
Three sections?
Mm-hmm.
It's one ordinance.
It's one more.
Well, there's Section 8A, 8B, and then the definition, Section 20.
You're confusing.
You got to get them people under control now.
Come on.
Popcorn out.
Let's go. Go ahead, explain it, Lucy.
Okay, so 8A was approved unanimously.
What was that?
That is to add hedges to that section. It's under the visibility.
Okay.
8B is actually, the vote on that was two to four, so that failed.
What part was that?
However, that's Section B, that's the crux of all the changes. That was the main part of all the changes. So they were not in, they're not in favor of adding the or 150 feet option.
Okay.
But they, if you do adopt that, they would like to see the exception, say, any size residential lot may construct a decorative transparent fence when all adjoining lots, just some clarification in there to make sure that the same kind of fence is allowed on that exception clause.
Okay, so let me clarify that. If it's 150 foot, it's not going to be in a subdivision that are 90 by 130s because your HOA isn't going to let you put the fence up by the front. So it'll be estate lots, S.F.R.E.
Right.
That works for me.
Well, just, they, the subcommittee added that exception, and it says, any size lot may construct a fence when they're adjoining lots facing the same right-of-way, have existing compliant fences. So they just want to clarify that that is residential lots.
And that cleans up the mess.
And that they, that the exception lot has to do a decorative transparent fence the same as the two on each side of them. That makes sense.
Go ahead, to be clear, in that scenario, the two on either side would be compliant with 150-foot rule, but maybe you got a 43-foot lot, wide lot with 43-foot frontage, you allow them to go ahead and do it, so you'd have the continuing...
That was the odd man out clause.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, so, so again, so on the 100, on B, that was the 150-foot minimum requirement.
Yeah, basically, they're not, yeah, they're not in favor of the section, but if you do adopt it, if you could add those two, three words.
What were the three words?
The, under the exception note, that it's residential and decorative transparent fences.
So that's what we're voting on?
We have to make that...
Yeah. Can you read it to us?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a third, third one involved?
The third one was Section 20, the definition of fence, and they were good with that.
Well, so why don't I just make the...
Go ahead.
...motion to approve as written in the agenda.
Well, because it's different than what's in the agenda.
If you, yeah, if you add under the exception to say, any size residential lot may construct a decorative transparent fence when all adjoining lots facing the same right-of-way or private street have existing compliant fences in the front yard.
Okay, so hang on. So does that mean if a lot is less than, or is less than the two acres and it doesn't have adjoining, the matching fences, then it can't put a fence? That's what it's saying, right?
Say that again?
They're basically doing away with 150-foot rule.
Yes. It's an exception. If you don't meet...
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. Yeah, so, so you're saying no. She's saying yes.
Well, it used to be two acres.
It used to be two acres.
Right.
We moved it to 120 feet, you came back with a recommendation of 150 feet.
That gets it out of the subdivisions.
It's an interesting thing.
And on the state lots.
That's right. And so now I'm asking for clarification. So it seems like everything was approved except for the 150-foot lot section, correct? So what is the intention, what was the, what was the intention of planning and zoning? To say that if you already have a fence and your neighbors have a fence, you can build one that matches? But it still has to stay, we're still reverting back to the two acres?
It's basically, if you have...
If you go down Coward's Creek, there's a bunch of non-compliant fences already.
Right, no, the except, because it was an entire paragraph, that paragraph included the 150 feet, which we were not in favor of. It also included, we'll call it an odd man out clause.
Correct.
So the recommendation is to make the odd man out clause less ambiguous, and in doing so, you need to, you need to say that these are residential lots and that if they, anyone can construct a fence if they're sandwiched between, so for example, if you have 150 and 150 and a 120 in the middle, that 120 can build a fence. If there are no fences, it would imply that that 120 can't put a fence until their neighbors have fences, but it would allow continuity.
Okay, so again, so, so before we suggested this, there was no 150-foot allowance?
Correct.
I think it was like 210 feet or...
No, it's two, two acres only.
It'd be two acres.
So are you guys supportive of the 150-foot?
No, we are not.
Okay.
Because...
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A variety of reasons that is, we don't feel like there's a compelling need to increase the number of front yard fences in the community, and we don't think it's consistent.
If we don't have it, we have to have them taken down then because they're non-compliant. I don't want to go tearing people's...
That's okay, so, so I'm going to make the motion that we approve the agenda item as written. The way it was written, the way it was discussed, yes.
Back to the 120 feet.
150 feet is the way it was written. So I make a motion to approve the ordinance as written in our material. Completely. Not three different sections, the ordinance as it is.
I'll second that. Give me a second. You got a second, but give me a second.
It's S.F.R.E. and it's 150, if you're not two acres.
Right.
That's what, that's the way it's written.
Yep.
I'm good. No? We got a motion, a second, discussion, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yes. If we are to vote on this unless, say, we approve it, I think we would be fine with planning and zoning coming back secondarily with that odd man out wording.
Well, the odd man out is in the, is in the material. So the odd man out was part of what we just, or what we're voting on, which basically says...
They were just clarifying it, that's all. They were just clearing it up and making sure...
What they were doing is doing away with 150-foot rule. Okay. Well, I made the motion to approve it as it is.
With the 150-foot.
With the 150-foot.
That's what's in the back up here.
And the odd man out rule.
Prohibit chain link, barbed wire.
Yes.
Shotguns.
Well, no, you can have shotguns in the front yard.
Can I ask one question? I would just like to understand, how long has this ordinance been on the books, and how many times have we had somebody come before us and asking for, can't think of the word, variance, thank you, that word. Sorry, it's late.
I believe this ordinance was written in 1996, and I think there's been five zoning, or variance, applications. We have received other, I mean, we receive inquiries on, you know, probably a monthly basis for people wanting to put fences in their front yards. This also, just to clarify, this addresses fences along the front property line. You can put a fence on your front building line, this is fences on your front property line. So, like I said, I mean, we get inquiries, I think zoning, or the ZBOA, like I said, five or six cases.
I'd just like to add that it's very difficult for the ZBOA to give a variance, they are very limited in what they could give a variance about, so we need to get planning and zoning to approve these things again. One more time, Sally, you get two comments?
Thank you.
You do.
I know, we all want to go home. I do, I have a question. This came to our attention because, I know we don't actually go out and look for folks who are in violation, so how did this come to our attention again, ma'am?
Yeah, so a particular, the most recent case was as, an house that was under construction built a fence that, in their front yard, along the front property line, they went to zoning board of adjustment, it was denied. They came to the Planning and Zoning Commission and petitioned the commission to change the ordinance. The commission, over several meetings, decided they wanted to leave the ordinance as is, and so they approached city council to get the ordinance changed as well. So that's where we are.
Did somebody call the question?
Carl's going to.
Hold on, how many questions have you asked? Okay, go ahead. Do we have a limit for this, maybe? Hey, everybody's getting punchy. Of those... Yes, sir. Your microphone on?
Yeah.
Got it now, it is. Of those five variance requests over the last 22 years, how many of them were granted? Do you have any idea?
I believe one.
One of those five? All right.
It was a zero?
Zero? All right, and then the, the other...
I think it was one.
The other question is, was the fence built with the house, or was the fence built after the house was built? And, I, I mean, the home builder is usually a pretty thorough guy. And I, I couldn't, and I wouldn't have thought anything like this would have slipped him. I'm not sure he built the fence.
Code enforcement told the person not to build the fence. Code enforcement told the person not to build the fence, they built the fence anyway, went to ZBOA, went to P&amp;Z. And then you go down the street, "Thank you."
The neighbor called it during construction, and I think the fence permit was separate from the house permit.
I heard the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? We know who your stripes are. It's okay. Ordinance number 201724, first reading of an ordinance providing for the repeal of telecommunications service sales and use tax exemption within the city of Friendswood, Texas. Do I hear a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll make the second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, and we talked about it earlier in the meeting, that this, this is a tax, and it will get passed on to our citizens, but it's a usage tax, and it does allow us to lower the property taxes to meet the same expenditures we're planning to do for next year. So we, we get to lower our property tax by putting this in.
Any other discussion?
Do we know how much we're going to be able to lower the property tax? Well, we're not lowering, I mean, you've got a, I think the budget was written assuming this is going to get passed, but what does this equate to as far as some piece of our rate, and, and, and then if we could clearly state what the rate would be if we didn't pass this?
The projected revenue, if you were to equate it to a property tax, would be about 1.2 cents on the tax rate to... So we proposed in the budget a 52-cent tax rate, so that would be 53.2 cents.
Each penny is 450, 350?
317.
317. This looks like it's about 490,000.
For a full year, for, for, well... 370 for a complete year. And to...
One of the problems I got with doing this is it's, it, it's artificially making it look as though we're offering a lower mileage rate than we really are. And I don't see where there's any cost incurred to us, people using their cell phones, so I'm not going to support this.
Just a little bit more of information, not at all disputing, Councilmember Gustafson, but the state of Texas tax code in Section 321.210 exempts telecommunications services from local sales taxes unless the city or the municipalities repeal the exemption. They themselves don't repeal the exemption, they've been taxing this for many, many years. League City is the most recent city to have done so, the first of this year. Alvin repealed this in April of 2016. Every other city around us did it, almost every other one, to my knowledge, did it in the late 80s or early 90s. So it's, most have had it in place for, for that period of time.
It does not apply to data.
Does not apply to data.
And, and we have been paying tax on land lines and all that for many, many, many years, so this is a...
What will this add to the average cellphone bill?
I looked at mine, and I pay it in neighboring city, it's $2.18 a month. So if I'm average.
See, my only concern is, is we will raise this tax, and whenever taxes go up, property taxes, this tax will still be there. I've found that when we do something, it never goes away, but anyway. All right, I call a question. Question's been called, all those in favor? All those opposed? E. First and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment 12 to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year 2016-17 to provide for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Dire motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. Communication from the mayor and council members. I'll go first. After five years of sitting here next to you, I want to give you this from the city of Friendswood with all your cohorts autograph.
Thank you very much.
I really enjoyed doing that because you meet a lot of...
Appreciate all your hard work, Moses.
I met a lot of people I wouldn't have met, hadn't filled in for the mayor ever now and then, it's really a pleasure. Thank you a lot. It's very nice y'all do this.
You'll forever have mine autographed, too.
Take that, that's a dollar, still won't give me a drink at the Sonic. Councilmember Gustafson, anything? Scott?
Pass.
Do you have anything to say? This is...
Oh, I'm, I'm still in shock. Well, I was sorry to miss the last meeting, but I had a brother-in-law pass away that had been in our family for 68 years, and he had a tough time the last few months, which kind of softened the blow. But, but anyway, that's about all I got to say.
Councilmember...
It's good, you did. Branson, yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Branson. Yes, see? I'm getting it.
Well, I had the pleasure of attending the newly elected officials conference in San Antonio this past week, and I won't bore y'all with everything, but I did learn quite a lot, and it was very interesting, but probably one of the pearls that I came away with, and we've been dealing with it all night long tonight, is the definition of the art of government is to not, is to satisfy the irritated without irritating the satisfied. So that's our challenge, fellas.
Councilmember Rocky?
First, congratulations to our mayor who got his third grandchild tonight.
11 pounds, one ounce. And I just missed visiting hours. So if I seemed like I might have been in a rapid mode at times, I was.
The only other thing, uh...
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I have the pleasure of be... I have the pleasure of being, being in a, in a musical in Friendswood at Purple Box Theater, but they needed a live dog, they're doing Annie. And they, they have gotten a dog from our shelter, and this dog is absolutely fabulous on stage, and the most friendly dog, and, and is well behaved, and, and is, and it- The, the play is about orphans, but the dog is truly the only orphan in the play. And the theater is, is going to pay the adoption fee for anyone who would like to adopt that dog. So I think that's a pretty nice thing, that our, our animal shelter people were able to do that, and Amy Castro has done a great job of bringing the dog over every night for the show, so.
Excellent. You already filled it out.
Yep.
Okay, I have a night- Huh? Do I have anything? I went first. Uh, because I really appreciated Mr. Hill. From day one, from day one. Thank you. Thank you. I mean, I do. Uh, and, um-
Not always, but, but sometimes.
And I'm extremely proud-
Like Kevin and I.
About my grandson, this makes my second grandson, and I can't wait to see him and my daughter.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I'm going to second it. I want to pull out item E, and I'm going to recuse myself from that. Okay, everything except item E.
I would advise my motion, and make motion approved consent agenda, all except E.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? I'll make the motion for E. E, second. Oh, you want to second it? Okay. I'm just going to sit there with my mouth shut. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? We are adjourned, folks.